Good morning. Today's Tuesday, March twenty-second times nine o'clock. The board's in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us, please identify yourself for the record.
Bob Batista.
Bo Idaho.
David Brooks, Ada County Operations.
Bruce Crystal, Operations.
Tim Klein, Clerk's Office.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Jennifer Hawley, Clerk's Office.
Robbins, running for procurement.
Jerry Block, procurement.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
I T A I.
Evan Adamin, for procurement.
Leon Lutz, and Development Services.
Bob McQuade, Assessor.
Phil McGrane, Clerk.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. First item is Development Services, revised findings of fact and conclusions of law. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you sitting in for Richard Beck today, so thanks for having me. At the March ninth meeting, you asked us to approve temporary living quarters, which was overturning the Director's denial of that decision. So we've revised findings of fact and conclusions of law to reflect that, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No, but I'll recuse myself since I didn't attend that meeting.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law. On case two zero two one zero three one eight five V A C.
We're doing A first, which is
I'm sorry. Two zero two one zero three one eight seven A Wesley Fitz.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up is, we'll take two zero two one zero three one eight five V A C, Sylvan Creek. And same thing?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioners, again revised findings of fact and conclusions of law showing approval of the secondary dwelling greater than nine hundred square feet.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revised findings of fact for application number two zero two one oh three one eight five dash V dash A C. Sylvan Creek comes.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. New business. We have two resolutions. I will open a public hearing on resolution number two seven three nine, ARPA resolution number ten, for approval of allowable expenditures from the American Rescue Fund budget. Is there discussion? Anybody here want to speak to that?
I can speak to that.
Okay, go ahead.
This is for the one million six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars grant for the filtration system at the Ada County landfill that you had talked about.
Okay. Any more discussion on this, on this resolution? If not, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two seven three nine. It's pleasure of the board.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution two seven three nine as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will next open the public hearing on resolution number two seven four zero, A R P A resolution number eleven, for approval of allowable expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act. Anyone here wish to speak to that?
I can speak to that as well.
Oh, go for it.
Okay, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is for using some of the ARPA ones for the self-funded insurance plan for the COVID expenditures. Phil, I don't know if you want to expand on that.
It was the meeting that we had.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. This is for the, for actually COVID-related expenditures, health insurance.
The county gets paid.
Health plan. This kind of makes, makes it up, or makes up some of the deficit in the, in the trust fund. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two seven four zero. It's pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution two seven four zero as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay. We have procurement. Open bid RFQ two two zero three seven.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County received one proposal for RFQ two two zero three seven. And we have bonfire pulled up. I can unseal it when you're ready.
We're ready.
We have the proposer up on the screen, and I can read it if you wish.
Okay.
Rockin' Land Design is our one submitter for RFQ two two zero three seven.
Okay.
Date that you'd like us to table it to?
Yes, we'll need some time to evaluate proposals and request that this be tabled for final ranking award to the March twenty-ninth open business meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and request end of pre-negotiations for RFQ two two zero three seven. ARPA Design Services for Ex-Bo Idaho Horse Stables Removal and for Protection of the Boise River to March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay. If you can read, we have next up opening bid two two zero five two, Ada County Mosquito Abatement District pesticide purchases. Go ahead.
We received four responses for bid two two zero five two. I have them up. I will unseal them right now for you. And then due to the number of line items, we'll just read the bidders' names into the record. Okay?
Apparently getting rid of mosquitoes is more popular than getting rid of horse stables.
Yes. I have the proposers up. I'll read them into the record for you. We have Adapco LLC, we have Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated, Target Specialty Products, and Visaris.
Okay.
And if you can, we'd need some time to review the bids, and we press that the bids be tabled to March twenty-ninth open business meeting.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table the award of bid two two zero five two, Ada County Mosquito Abatement District pesticide purchase to March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, now I have the bid opening for bid number two two zero five three, Ada County Noxious Weed Control and Pesticide Purchase. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we received two responses for bid two two zero five three. I have the muff car on bonfire. I will unseal them for you. And then just like on five two, we'll just read the names of the bidders into the record, do the number of line items.
Quick, we'll go through it. Go ahead.
So we've received one bid for Nutrient Solutions and one from Wilbur Ellis Company.
Same date?
Same date, March twenty-ninth.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Go ahead and move to table the award of bid two two zero five three, Ada County Noxious Weed Control and Pesticide Purchase to March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We now have two change orders. We'll start with change order number two, Ada County Juvenile Services Conversion two oh two one, Agreement Number one four I three nine, modify the completion date. Is there any discussion?
Bruce?
Yeah, it's just material. They were unable to get the shower enclosure. We actually had to change it, so it's, we're a few weeks out from getting that, so they're going to go over their completion date, so we just need to push it out a wee bit.
Well, as long as it's just a wee bit.
Just a wee bit.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the change order number two, Ada County Juvenile Shower Conversion twenty twenty-one. Is it twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two? Twenty twenty-two, correction. As listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have change order number one, Ada County Jail Roof Section eleven replacement. Decrease of twenty-three thousand dollars. Would the operation like to speak to that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is to reflect the deduction in cost of the total product, total cost of the project as unused contingency funds, so there you go, twenty-three thousand dollars back to the bank.
Oh, boy. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number one, Ada County Jail Roof Section eleven replacement, twenty twenty-one. It should be twenty twenty-two. As listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
It is twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty.
It is twenty twenty.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We now have licenses. And
Just one or two of them, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
Just one or two of them.
There's a handful there. Let's, two and a half pages, or two, yeah, two and a half pages. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the licenses.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits, one license transfer, and a hundred and nineteen license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So what's the deadline on these?
May third.
Oh, so we have a ways to go.
Yeah, so we have a ways to go.
Okay.
And they're still quite few licenses, Austin.
We'll get them.
Oh, yeah.
All right. We have our distinguished clerk with us, Mr. Phil McGrane, with some good news.
I, you know, I'm sure these are rumblings that you're hearing as well, but legislature is looking at potentially wrapping up this week. I've heard as early as tomorrow, this latest Friday, so it'll be interesting. One of the big things that they took up yesterday, I relate to it, is just the indigent program and repealing the indigent statutes. And so obviously that has big implications for our office, so we'll be working with the indigent team, just try and look at what that looks like both for the next year, so the next, it'll be kind of a year period to wrap up the program. And then it'll, a year from, I guess July, it'll be expired.
That's just one aspect of that bill. That bill's a big bill.
It's a big bill. But you can appreciate how that's a major aspect.
That's a major aspect, and it's something that should be done, and it also repeals cat fund.
Yep.
Which it should, which it should, but it also has, has a major implications for public defense.
Defense, yep. Well, most of the argue, the discussion has been focused on public defense despite it has enormous implications.
Enormous implications, and that, and that's really good, I think, to get that, to get that, that indigent thing wrapped up.
Yep, yep.
And it'll be
Starts to define what the future of indigent looks like. There still will be all the non-medical, like, this is just the medical portion.
Just the medical portion, yeah, we understand.
But we'll have to have staff and meetings to continue on with the hospitals coming in.
Well, for a while, yeah.
Yeah, for a little while, yep, no, they're still the existing, so they will, but it will continue to, you've already been seeing that, right, meeting less frequently and everything, and that will just continue. And I talked to Mark Peterson last week about it, and I think they're even preparing to move on to other paths, you know, so.
Well, well, good. Do you have anything, anything, you, you mentioned that they plan on maybe closing. It'll be a miracle if they do. Because the Joint Finance appropriation committee is still meeting.
Oh, okay.
And when the Joint Finance appropriation is still meeting, they don't close.
Sure. That's one of the more important things setting the state budget.
Well, yeah, and historically, the end of the legislative session occurs ten days after the Joint Finance appropriation committee adjourns, and they haven't adjourned yet. So they may have some rabbits to pull out of their ass to do it faster, I don't know. And maybe they do, I don't know. Good luck, I hope they do.
I, I will also note Friday is the deadline for candidates to withdraw or to file for write-ins for the upcoming elections, so we're watching that, and then I'll have, we'll have people at elections working all weekend getting ballots ready to go, because the following weekend is the first absentee ballots go off.
So there's already been requests for absentee ballots?
Yeah, we've been collecting requests ever since January first.
Right.
We have roughly like forty-five hundred absentee requests so far in the queue. And there'll probably be some more, but those ballots, by federal law, we have to have the very first ones out forty-five days in advance, and so that's April first.
Has to get to the military and so forth.
Correct.
Yes, okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Well, thank you. All right, we have next up the claims journal. I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions. May I have a motion on personnel actions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personal actions as listed on the agenda and Epicenter Sheet Room N O five, Commissioner's Office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Mr. Bob McQuade, do we have any good news from you?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things.
Our distinguished assessor.
I was waiting for that. Step on your toes. Mr. Chairman, PTR property tax reduction, as things are really starting to wrap up, there is pretty busy in the office, as you know, because of people coming in for property tax reductions. We have about two thousand applications received so far. Last year, we had about forty-five hundred altogether, so we're about halfway there, April fifteenth. Actually, it is a little bit late, and I think it's April nineteenth is the deadline.
That's the zerger breaker.
Yes, right, right. And so we've got that going on, and then we also, we've been pretty busy at motor vehicles. We, last week, we served more people than we did a year ago. But I think that's primarily because a lot of people were being turned away because of the long lines. So things are back to normal at motor vehicles. Wait times are about three, four minutes. We'll have maybe a twenty-minute, twenty-five-minute maximum wait time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is your star office closed now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay, it's open.
Yes, it is open. She's out there the other day.
Oh, nice.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have anyone from the Treasurer's Office? Okay.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Treasurer's Office to provide an update.
Okay.
Yesterday was the mistral, first half mistral deadline, so at the end of the close of business yesterday, we applied the late charge in the property tax system. This week, we're diligently working on the, to prepare for the tax D hearing next week. As of today, we have twenty-two parcels. Typically, we see a few of those fall off as we get closer to deadline, people pay, typically right, you know, up to the day, so hopefully we'll see that number reduced.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, moving along, we have a couple of Development Services items. Project number two zero two zero 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 four six zero, final plat, carry subdivision.
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioners, this is a final plat for a two-lot residential subdivision in the rural urban transition district. It's located at three five one West Lake Hazel Road and consists of ten point two one acres. We've reviewed it. It's in compliance with the preliminary plat that was approved by you earlier, so it's ready for your signature.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this, this project? Hearing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve application number two zero two zero 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 four six zero S, final plat, carry subdivision, and authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have next up another final plat. Application number two zero one six zero one two five eight S F Dry Creek Ranch.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. This is a final plat for Dry Creek Ranch subdivision number seven. Consists of thirty-two residential lots and three common lots. Property contains forty-three point five two acres and is located off West Brookside Lane and West Quail Valley Road within the Dry Creek Ranch Plan community. Stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve application number two zero one six zero one two five eight dash S dash Dry Creek Ranch, and authorize the Chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Leon. Next up, we have the minutes. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have, next up, interim event agreements for Expo Idaho. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve and ratify the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have, next up, Barbara Park Education Event Center. We have five events. Do we have a motion on the Barbara Park Event Center agreements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the five Barbara Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll now take up agreements. Is there discussion on any of the agreements?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull C for additional discussion. And then I would move to approve the six remaining agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Before we second that, can you give a reason on wanting to table that so we can tee it up?
Uh, just, I'm curious about the final cost of these. The contracts said thirty-five hundred dollars, which sounded kind of low. And I just wanted to discuss why they're, why we're installing these on Benjamin. Why only two, why at Benjamin, and are we planning on installing chargers across the entire county as well?
Well, I'd agree with that. We need to have a discussion on, on, on the, a global discussion on charging stations for county properties. And that's what this is for. This is for, just for design work to put a property, to put a, two charging stations at Benjamin. It's not for the actual charging stations, it's for design work. And so I think we do need to have a broader discussion on, on, on that issue.
Yeah, is this yours, Phil?
No.
Who's, who's?
Bruce, Operations.
Both operations, yeah, do you speak to? If I may, you are correct. The thirty-five hundred is for design work. The estimated cost of this is forty thousand dollars. The, and that's for four charging stations in two locations at Benjamin. The reason why we're starting at Benjamin, we have to start somewhere, number one. Number two is the future. Number three, it was at the request of the Clerk's Office. They want to get an electric van for future use, so we thought we'd start the process here.
Okay. Well, again, I think we ought to have a broader discussion on, on charging stations at, at, at county property.
We'll be getting a, so we have a five hundred dollar credit back from Medical Power for installations is something to consider in future installations.
Well, well, we can have that discussion.
Sure. So we'll table that one.
I think it'd be good to do that, to do that.
Is there electric van for elections?
I need to find out more on this.
That was that Sol's request.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion, but we need a date to table it.
When's a good date to table it? I would say two weeks from today, because that'd give us time to have a, have a discussion. That'd be my, my guess, if the maker of the motion is okay with that.
Sure, Annie will find us a date.
Give me one quick second. So we moved a couple O B M dates, so I want to make sure we're right. Okay, so on April fifth would be two weeks.
Okay. Okay. So you might want to restate the, the motion with the April fifth date in it.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve six agreements as listed on the agenda. I move to table I move to table Agreement Number One-four-six-one-six to April fifth, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think we're in recess. Thank you.
No red shoes today.
Uh, good morning. Today's Tuesday, uh, March twenty-second. Uh, the time is nine-thirty. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us are.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
NIT guy. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
Second. You've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have seven step increases EMS pay plan. Do I have a motion on personnel actions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain in file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'll entertain a motion on the Minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign documents on behalf of the board.
Second. You've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion on Agreement Number One-four-six-one-nine. If you'd like to speak to it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, this agreement is just a training sign agreement that we have to have with the American Heart Association. Um, for Boise City, they have, uh, their own folks that train, uh, Pete, the Police Department. Uh, really have our accessories to train the Fire Department, but this is the Police Department trainers. They align with our.
Okay.
Trainings agency.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Agreement Number One-four-six-one-nine as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to give us an update?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, COVID numbers are remaining, uh, you know, at about three and three-quarters. It's stayed about that way for, uh, you know, at least the last few weeks. Um, the hospitals are, are still near capacity, but it's not COVID-related. It's just, I think, something that we're gonna see with the growth that we've seen in the valley. Same thing that we're experiencing with our call volume, uh, just the growth that we've seen, not enough hospitals and not enough paramedics. So, um, but, uh, outside of that, the, I've, I've been watching closely, uh, the stealth Omicron variant, BA-two, is, is, uh, rapidly spreading in New York and New Jersey right now, so we'll just have to watch that, is it, it's gonna move across the country, I'm sure of it, but, uh, the symptoms are very similar to the, the, uh, Omicron variant, so tend to be milder symptoms in vaccinated folks and but we'll, we'll have to keep a close eye on it.
They're contagious, though.
Yeah, it's actually one, I, I've read in several articles that it's one-point-five times more, uh, contagious than the Omicron variant, which was way more contagious than the previous one, so seems like it's becoming more contagious and maybe not quite as virulent, but just have to keep an eye on things.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
When St. Luke's had to close down last week, did we have to divert, uh, patients from there to other places?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, can you, I'm not sure if we had to divert any patients. I'd be surprised in forty-eight minutes if there wasn't at least one patient that had to be diverted, but the crews knew about it, um, when it occurred, so, you know, that's not something that we'd be, uh, very aware of. They would just move patients to St. Al's or potentially St. Luke's Meridian, so. Uh, but in forty-eight minutes, I'm sure that somebody couldn't get in there.
When's your bill getting signed?
Mr. Chair, it got signed last Thursday. We went out, uh, um, they actually moved it from his, uh, ceremonial signing room over to Boise Fire Station One, and we had, uh.
Didn't you see it? They're great pictures.
Yeah, it was, it was a good picture.
He's got the big fancy hat on. I'm texting Sean going, where'd you get that hat?
Yeah, we, uh, uh, we've got, uh, we, we all got into our Class A's and went down there, uh, representing Vanderwouda, and, uh, Senator Riggs both showed up. They were the sponsors on the uh, Senate and House side and, and got the governor sat down there and signed it, so it's, it's law now. Um, we have a, um, a meeting next week with State Medicaid, with Juliette, the, uh, uh, Medicaid Director, and we'll start that process of getting the state plan amendment submitted. The Fire Chiefs Association, which we're a member agency of, has hired a consultant group that basically will help the state write the state plan amendment, so um, that should speed things up. We're, we're shooting to get it signed before June thirtieth, because then all the payments will be backdated to April first of this year. So, we're really gonna try to get that done, uh, before the end of June, and it was actually Medicaid that reached out to us. You know, the law does direct the Medicaid, uh, uh, division to submit the state plan amendment, so they actually reached out to us the day that the bill was signed, so we'll get that, that work underway. Um, we'll be headed up to, uh, you'll see a, a travel request come in up to Coeur d'Alene to the Fire Chiefs Association Conference at the end of April. Um, there's a, a pretty big section that we're gonna cover on the GMT stuff up there with the consultant group, and I've talked to, uh, them for hours, but I've never actually met them in person. They're, uh, out of Massachusetts, so, um, I'll head up there, um, and, and start working through that process with them and let the other agencies in the state know, you know, how valuable this is and, and how to help them, so.
Okay.
It was a good day.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a, and it does have emergency clauses, so it's effective.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, and that's the state division of Medicaid, right?
Correct.
To reach out to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it, I, I doubt Medicaid would actually reach out to you.
No, not the, not the feds. State division, you're correct.
The state division of, of Medicaid, all right. Okay, well, is there further discussion? Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, we're in recess.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. Today's Tuesday, uh, March twenty-second. Uh, the time is, uh, nine-thirty-seven. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Avamoor Community Infrastructure District, Number One, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two regarding Avamoor CID expenditures.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion on the Minutes?
I'll move to approve the Minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Thank you. Uh, you've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We're in recess.